Provo City Planning Commission, November 28th, 2018.
November 28th, 2018. It is 6:03 PM. On our agenda this evening, we have seven items. The items that are marked with an asterisk are legislative in nature and the Planning Commission will make recommendation to municipal council on those items. The items that are not asterisk will have decisions made by the Planning Commissioners. Before we get started this evening, we'll have the prayer read in by Mr. Rowan and the Pledge of Allegiance by Mr. Phillips.
Our Father in Heaven, we give thanks that we are gathered together this evening as citizens and residents of the city. We're grateful for the place that we have to live. We're grateful for the work that's gone before us into creating our community. We're grateful for the many opportunities that we have and we pray that we might extend those opportunities to as many people in our city as possible. We pray that we might be able to listen and hear one another this evening and make choices that will be of greatest benefit to as many of our neighbors as possible. We give thanks for the work that our city staff and elected officials do to make decisions again that will provide us with opportunities. We pray that we might also be mindful of those who will live here in the future and how our decisions now will impact and affect them. We offer this prayer in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Will you stand and join with me in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll start off with roll call this evening and a statement of whether there is any conflict of interest on any agenda items, starting with Mr. Phillips.
Russell Phillips, no conflicts.
Deborah Jensen, no conflicts.
Jayman Rowan, no conflicts.
Shannon Ellsworth, no conflicts.
Eve Anderson, no conflicts.
Thank you, Commissioners. Because we do have seven items on the agenda this evening, we will be enforcing a timer for any public comment and also for applicants. And so please be mindful of the timer that will be posted on the board. Right. The first item on our agenda tonight was continued from our last hearing. Item one, Rachel and Gainer Brunson request a conditional use permit for a major home occupation for a recording studio located at 1043 East 2620 North in the R1.8 zone. This is in the Rock Canyon neighborhood, and Mr. Ardmore will present this item.
Okay, thank you. So we were here two weeks ago, so I won't dive as deep into the application and all the background, but just to give you some reminders, here's the property here on the corner of 2620 North and 1060 East, some images of the property. So here's the original home. Here's the addition for the recording studio and a better view of it from the eastern side and the northern side. So the issues here, we went through a lot last time. We went through kind of the background of the concerns, kind of what the new major home occupation code would allow as far as customers per hour, times, promotional meetings. The big remaining question from last meeting was the 49 percent. There's a restriction in 1441-040 for all home occupations that it can't take up more than 49 percent of the property of the dwelling. So staff, Bill and myself, were actually able to get into the home last Wednesday evening after the staff report had already gone out and go room by room and we were given a tour basically by the applicant's brother that allowed us to kind of determine what's used for the business, what's used for the home. In that we found, so the home in its entirety, the structure in its entirety, including the garage, is 7,411 square feet. Okay? So that takes us to a 49 percent of 3,631 square feet. What we were able to find on that inspection, not counting the garage, the business side of it was 3,621 square feet. So 10 square feet under the 49 percent. With that, one of the conditions, the first condition in your staff report changes. Because we can't add the garage to the business portion of it, or else they'd be over, we would propose that that first condition where it says be limited to six business-related vehicles at any one time, that would be reduced down to four. Again, because the garage holds two spaces, there is only four remaining for business use. However, in major home occupations, it signifies that, or it regulates that up to six customers per hour may come to a dwelling between the specified hours. That would still be the case. They're left to choose how they carpool and work the logistics of that out, but we would just limit the business-related vehicles to four at any one time. Except for promotional meetings, there is no limit on that still. So that answered that question. We can, we've verified and confirmed that they can be under that 49 percent with a couple of changes in the proposed conditions. And you'll see in the proposed conditions that there has been some changes from the last meeting. So that first one that I alluded to of the four business-related vehicles, the next two came kind of out of the last meeting, different concerns that were brought up. We thought these conditions could mitigate those concerns for safety and general welfare of the neighborhood. So the second one is that any business activities, even promotional meetings, would end at 9:00 PM, where the code on your screen says that that restriction is just for regular business meetings. We would extend that to the promotional meetings in subsection four. The other one, just so staff can kind of be aware and help mitigate any issues or concerns that would come out of these promotional meetings, we propose a third condition that the applicant notify staff when any of these special events are occurring, any concerts, rehearsals, things like that. So staff can be made aware and kind of monitor the situation. Of course, these are just three suggested conditions. You could add to or change any of these through your discussion, but that's what staff has considered would mitigate the concerns heard from last meeting. And I think that's it for my presentation. Again, you kind of got into the most of it last, or two weeks ago, so I'll take any questions that you have.
Thank you. I have one quick question.
Yes.
You've used the term promotional meetings in condition two, and you've used the term "special events" in item three. Would they equate to be the same thing?
Right. I think maybe more consistent language would make that easier to maybe just call them promotional meetings in both conditions.
Is that like a Tupperware party or something similar where once in a while you have more people coming?
Right.
So paragraph four is where the term promotional meetings comes from.
Yeah.
Thank you. Ms. Ellsworth?
Yeah, I'm just wondering, condition three, the applicant will notify staff when promotional meetings are scheduled. What does that do for the applicant or what does that do for staff?
For staff, it allows us to monitor that. So first, it ensures that there's only four happening a month if they're having to notify us each time because they're restricted to four a month. The other thing, in the past, traffic and outside activities have been a concern. So if those are happening in a time where staff can monitor that, that would help kind of police it.
Mr. Anderson?
Is it staff's intent to have the vehicle limitations in play the whole time? That's how I read the conditions, is that they're going to be limited to six business-related vehicles, period. That's regardless of whether it's a promotional meeting or anything else.
Well, to four now, and...
No, I'm saying they, six vehicles visiting the premise, whether it's just their regular everyday course of business or the promotional meeting, is that the intent or is it?
I think the intent was for regular business outside of promotional meetings. So limiting that to four business vehicles during those business things. Promotional meetings through the code don't have any limitation on that, but if you wanted to extend that towards that, that would be up to the Planning Commission to make that condition.
Staff necessarily mean for that to apply?
Correct.
Okay. Has it been customary to limit the number of promotional meetings that somebody could have in a home occupation?
Well, it's limited in the code.
Maybe on that to further restrict?
This is pretty new. We haven't had this chance before.
Any other questions? Okay. If not, before I invite the applicant up, I just wanted to state that we had a considerable amount of public comment at the last hearing, which was two weeks ago, and because of that, we will not be holding public comment tonight on this item. The only item that was outstanding really was clarification of the square footage and some of the other things we've discussed so far tonight. So at that time, I'd like to invite Mr. Brunson to speak to any concerns you've heard or...
Can I invite my wife up here too?
Thank you.
This is Rachel.
Yeah.
Yes.
This is Rachel Brunson, my wife.
So I got to watch everything on the TV last time. That was kind of interesting. My name's Rachel Brunson. I did have a little bit of a concern about some of these restrictions that are going forward because they're based on violations that we've had in the past. Last year, we were told that we had a violation, that there was too many cars and too many customers. And so we talked to the city about that, talked to city attorney and some police officers, and they ended up dropping the violations because they said the city could not come up with a rule for what a customer was. And they actually came to the consensus that a customer was one transaction. So they said a choir was a customer, a band was a customer, and that's what we were told. And then the previous neighborhood chair, he actually said, you know, in his report on August 7th, 2017, "As neighborhood chair, I was contacted by a police officer," I believe his name was Sean, "who called me and said he'd talked to a zoning officer, whose name I think was Reeves, the city attorney. The officer told me they all agreed that a singing group of 25 counts as one customer. This was part of the problem. We did not know we were in violation." So our character's kind of been attacked because the violations were dropped in 2017 because they could not come up with the consensus as to what a customer was. So all of, end of 2017, all of 2018, we thought we were in compliance. We weren't trying to be out of compliance. This is what we were told by the city attorney. So we're having these further restrictions put on us based on the fact that we have violations when we actually didn't know we had a violation. So if they in turn changed the definition of a customer, then they should have let us know before we were further given new violations. I don't know. I know the new home occupation has changed and all of that has changed now. Are the people being notified that this has changed and they have different regulations? Because we weren't. And my personality and Gainer's personality, we're not trying to do things that are in violation. We're trying to follow what the code said it was. And we were told by city attorneys that we were in compliance. And then all of a sudden, they're like, oh, you're in violation. We're like, but we thought we were in compliance. Another thing I wanted to mention is that most of these events are probably my fault and not Gainer's because I volunteer for the Joseph Smith Historical Society and I have a Facebook page that I work with. It's called LDS Missionaries. And we would do firesides once a month on Sunday. And those firesides were what was creating most of the cars. So I didn't realize that they considered those firesides part of his business because if a bishop had a fireside or if anybody else had a fireside, they would be allowed to have as many cars as they wanted. We did not realize that anytime we had a fireside or a birthday party or anything like that, that that would be considered Gainer's business because he has a studio and we were using that portion of the studio. I am also a little concerned about the square footage. When I added up the square footage, we, I have five children and we don't have any den area or place of where our kids can play in our house. So the entire basement of the studio, except for, I know we had to use a bathroom and consider a bathroom, is being used for our family. I mean, I, you know, my 15 and 17-year-old boys, they're over six feet tall now and they really don't want to share a little 10 by 10 room anymore. So we had to turn the den in our house into bedrooms. And so I'm a little concerned about the square footage still because according to my calculations, we're still counting the loft. Are we still counting the loft? No, but we're counting, what else are we counting? I'd love to look at it at some point in time.
We could share that with you outside this meeting.
Sure, great. Okay. Because I, according to my calculations, we only have about 6,000 square feet of area and that we were personally using about 3,500. So that was kind of a shock to me. Anyway, I think, I think that's about it. Do you have anything to say?
Yeah, I'd like to say a few things. Yeah, there was a lot of comments made two weeks ago about us violating, being in violation, not sticking to our word. Maureen LePree was a former neighborhood chair. She says, "I was the neighborhood chair when the issue, I took this off the video and I wrote it down word for word. I actually sent a video of David and I. Anyway, I was the neighborhood chair when the issue came up before, when they applied for a variance. We were at the Tim View Auditorium. First of all, we never applied for a variance." That's the city council.
Mr. Brunson?
Yeah.
The public hearing was closed.
Okay.
And the neighborhood chair allowed you to come up and speak in spite of that to address the conditions that have been discussed. I think it's not proper for you to go beyond just addressing the conditions that are being considered at this point because the public hearing has been closed and other members of the public aren't going to get a chance to come up and speak.
Well then, are we taking into account any people saying that we were in violation?
I don't think that Planning Commissioners particularly worried about that or concerned with that.
I think the last staff report clearly stated that there had been violations. And from the Planning Commissioner's standpoint, we take the reports that the city has prepared for us to review. So that's what we're basing on. We are not basing anything on hearsay from other people. So we rely on the staff reports for the facts.
So we can't refute that at all?
Chair, may I?
Mr. Anderson?
Yeah, I mean, we're looking at this with a fresh set of eyes. What's happened in the past, at least for me, is it's done. The matters before us now are what's going to happen going forward, what makes sense in terms of conditions to try to make what you're doing not disruptive in a residential neighborhood. It's that simple. So all of the discussion that has happened, and frankly, I was bothered in the last meeting that we spent a couple of hours talking about things that weren't relevant, and I don't think the past is relevant.
So do you speak for the others when you say we're not considering violations?
I'll let them speak for themselves.
That's something that the Commissioners will discuss amongst themselves once this portion of the hearing is over.
We don't have a chance to refute that at this time?
That was, that was heard at the last hearing. So today, we are proceeding with what is proposed in item one.
Great, thank you.
I'll just say, I mean, I was out of town at the last meeting and wasn't able to be here. So I don't have any of the, you know, what happened last meeting in my brain. For me, it's just a matter of, here's the code, are you in compliance or not? I mean, that's, you know, so refuting, I don't care about that stuff. I just care about, okay, here's the code for a major home occupation. Are, you know, are you in compliance or not?
But we're being restricted.
According to the code, not according to neighbors who've made complaints or anything. It's just, here's the code, this is the law.
The code clearly defines what a customer is, what's permitted under a major home occupation, and it is, it is upon the Planning Commissioners and staff to then make any additional conditions on that.
Okay, we have, we want to refute the square footage information, but is this not the time for that? When could we actually do that?
You would need to take that up with staff after this hearing. And I'm sure they'll be happy to make an appointment with you.
So for the record, the staff report was that their square footage is in compliance with the 49 percent of the code. So I'm not sure what there's to refute.
Yeah, what would you refute exactly?
Because the staff is saying they're in compliance.
Well, we were hoping for the six, but we've been put down to four. And I was told that we had been passed for the six.
You were not passed for anything previously. It was, it was continued to this hearing.
Right. But at that time, it was like, it had been verified that yes, we were in compliance and we could, we could go for the six. But this is a surprise that we're now being told we can only have four, which is a pretty big deal for us.
Mr. Papironi?
So for members of the Planning Commission, the code says you can have up to six, and the code also says you have to have sufficient parking for those six. So if the Planning Commission would like to allow them to have the six that the code allows, the Planning Commission can also say you need six off-street parking spaces, not including the garage.
Because the garage is not included in the square footage calculations, correct?
I was told that the garage was included, or we would have been more prepared on this one.
Staff is clearly articulated how the square footage was calculated, that the garage was not included, and that means you have four parking spaces, two in the driveway apron and two on the side.
Okay, well, I was told by Aaron that we were good on the parking for six, and so that's all.
That was before the square footage was, was checked, verified.
So we need to discuss more of the square footage, I guess, at another time afterwards.
That would be correct. Commissioners, did you have any questions for the applicant? Was there anything else?
You guys weren't at the other meeting, but I'd just like to tell you that my brother lives next door. His property is joined with ours, and he has a house across the street. And he's here tonight. He totally supports this. Anyway, that helps it all. Okay.
I just, I would like to look at the square footage because I calculated it myself based on the plans. So I was just a little confused. That's all.
Thank you. All right, Commissioners, I will turn it back over to you for further discussion. Questions of staff. Mr. Anderson?
So parking and the number of off-street parking spaces, how many exist today with and without the garage?
So the property has six off-street parking spaces with the garage.
Okay. And that's counting some in tandem?
Yes. Two behind the garage.
And two in the garage?
Two in the garage and two on the side.
Okay.
Yeah.
So again, the total of six parking spaces today onsite, including the two garage spaces?
Yeah, you can see here, you've got two here off-street, two here, and then two in the garage there.
Any other questions for staff? Mr. Rowan?
I didn't think I was confused about this, but I just, so I just want to make sure. In order for the square, what you're telling us is that in order for the square footage thing to work out, you had to include, you had to exclude the garage from the business, the business square footage. Is that right?
Correct.
If you included the garage as part of the business's square footage, then you're over the 49 percent of the house total square footage, which belongs to the business.
Right.
So the two, the two cars parked in the garage are considered residential vehicles.
Yes.
And the two cars parked on, you know, outside on there and there are considered business vehicle spaces.
Spaces. Correct. That's correct.
So the square footage is, so you've touched on two issues. The square footage is one. The other one is, the code says you have to have sufficient off-street parking for your patrons. I don't believe our practice has been to allow the property owner to move their cars out onto the street so the patrons can use the spaces in the garage. You don't get to be a property owner and a employee of the business, right? So the spaces in the garage should be counted towards the occupants who live there because the occupants who live there aren't patrons of the business. They're not, they're not the customers coming to the business. You're supposed to have sufficient off-street parking for the customers coming to the business. Does that make sense?
And we're talking about a site that at least potentially has two uses.
Site with two different needs, right?
Right.
Any further discussion? Mr. Anderson?
No.
No? Ms. Ellsworth?
So if I understand this correctly, the applicant could, in effect, choose whether they want to be over 49 percent on their business or be, or have four parking spaces?
Well, if they're over 49 percent, then they couldn't have the business.
Right, okay. But I mean, we were kind of picking between these two scenarios and one would exclude the business, right?
Or, or if I understand staff correctly, they could have six off-street parking spots. They just don't have it right now? Is that...
Sure. If they could find, if they could find a way to establish more off-street parking and staying within all the other regulations of the R1 code.
Right.
Then that's also an option for them. Sure.
So there would be a possibility, I don't have a pointer, but, you know, let's just say, you know, that parking slab on the side of the house.
1060 East.
Yeah, 1060 East. You know, that, they could theoretically
Yeah.
double that parking space and have one, two, three, four, five, six, then the two in the garage that are personal vehicles and still be in compliance?
That would put them out of compliance with the zoning code for the R1 zone. So they'd have to find some other kind of layout to do it.
That would put them out of compliance because the R1 zone says you can only have up to four off-street?
No, parking in the yard is not permitted unless it leads to off-street, or covered parking. So like a carpool or a garage. So there's, there's different regulations in the zone that would determine where the parking could go. I'm not saying they couldn't do it. It would just take some imagination.
So this leads, this parking slab here leads to a covered...
It doesn't. It's non-conforming. So it's grandfathered in.
So the existing is already non-conforming?
Yeah.
Gotcha.
It may be discussion. I'm pretty comfortable looking at this and I really appreciate the way that staff's analyzed it. I think they're just trying to be pragmatic and say this is what's available, therefore that's what makes sense to connect to the business activity. I guess from another perspective as well, and I think I mentioned this before, I really feel like the major home occupation allowances are extremely generous. So just in terms of, you know, what we saw last meeting, in particular relative to the business and how it operates, and for me, the concept of having six patrons potentially every hour in and out of a site in a residential neighborhood, that potentially is very impactful. So I feel very... feel very comfortable, you know, going above and beyond what's in the code with some additional limitations, like what staff is recommending, for a reason that has, you know, a less direct connection to the parking, and, you know, kind of along the lines as well of being really generous, the idea that each week you can have up to 12. Would that be for a specified duration of time, or is it more open-ended than that, just?
So the code doesn't really restrict it, but we've offered a condition to restrict that to 9:00 P.M.
Okay. Starting whenever, though, I mean.
Yeah.
It could be day-long.
It could be holiday thing.
As long as it terminates.
Yep.
Yeah, I think it's not uncommon for some families to have really big get-togethers on a really.
Right.
Frequent basis, and you might compare this business's impact during those promotional meetings to some of those types of gatherings that are commonplace with some households in residential neighborhoods. But every week, I wonder if that's appropriate, or if there's some reason to say, maybe instead of four times a month, two, or that type of a thing. Clearly, taking staff at face value with the 49%, if they satisfy the conditions, I think this gets approved. It's just a matter of what makes it fit with the neighborhood so that it's not a problem.
And, and I agree with you, Mr. Anderson, that I think the regulations governing major home occupation in a residential district like this are, are pretty generous to the extreme, and I would like to see eventually that that be, that those regulations be addressed and, and further refined and restricted. I think we heard from the neighborhood last, last hearing, there were some in support, but there were a lot of people that were very upset about it, and I can, I can imagine if there is a big event or a promotional event once a week, that's pretty impactful. This is a neighborhood that doesn't even have sidewalks. I think there's sidewalks on one side of the street or across the street, but the particular block this residence is on doesn't even have sidewalks. So, you know, it's kind of a suburban, very, very suburban setting up against the mountains, and it's not what you would call urban core by any stretch of the imagination. So I would agree with your suggestions that restricting, the restrictions that have been proposed are appropriate, and perhaps something additional in terms of promotional meetings.
I'd agree with that. I don't, I think that a promotional meeting once a week seems too generous. I'd also be interested in hearing about, or from staff, I guess, what kind of precedent we're setting with this applicant must notify staff when a promotional meeting is scheduled. It seems like that could set a precedent that could get out of hand. I, I mean, we probably don't want that occurring in perpetuity for a number of properties. And then another concern is that even though there are happy and supportive neighbors, any one of those properties could flip tomorrow, and there could be a different resident inside who is less, you know, less satisfied with that kind of activity in their neighborhood. So I don't really like the idea of saying that, well, all neighbors are okay with that, all immediate neighbors, or most immediate neighbors, because that could flip tomorrow.
In answer to the question of precedent, conditional use permits are site-specific and they're business-specific, and this is a very unusual business. I'm sure we don't have another one as a home occupation in the city. So I don't think conditions you would set here would set a precedent at all, because it's very specific to this property and this particular business request.
Mr. Anderson?
And maybe on that point, whether this comes into play on other applications or not, the idea that there's some need for oversight on a weekly basis, you know, for staff to become aware, maybe therefore follow-up, you know, I mean, I don't know what the application fee is for a business like this, but it seems like the rest of the community then would get to subsidize its operation and sort of that policing, so that's not enticing for me really at all. But at the same time, I understand, I think, why staff would say, let us know, and why it makes sense to have that level of oversight on something like this.
Is there a process that has been established for the applicant to notify staff of promotional, promotional meetings, or is that to be worked out?
Yeah, no specific details, but that could be worked out fairly easily.
Email or phone call, either one.
Yeah. You could just email the zoning administrator each time, and that'd be sufficient.
Thank you. Mr. Anderson?
I'm sure I think I'm ready to make a motion.
Wonderful.
On item number one, the proposed conditional use permit for a major home occupation for a recording studio located at 1043 East, 2620 North, in the Rock Canyon neighborhood. I move that the planning commission approve the conditional use, subject to the following conditions, that the business be limited to six business-related vehicles at any one, I'm sorry, thank you, four business-related vehicles at any one time, and that all business activities, including promotional meetings, will end at 9:00 P.M., that the applicant will notify staff when special events are scheduled, and that the applicant be permitted to have two promotional meetings each month. That's my motion, and I guess I have a question as well, but.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, motion by Mr. Anderson, seconded by Ms. Ellsworth. Shall I read that in again?
Can I ask a quick question? Do, do we want to add, they could have six, were they to provide the parking that was in compliance with, I mean, again, I don't, I don't know how they would do that, but I suppose they could, you know, if that, those two extra vehicles mattered a lot to them, and they wanted to go to the, go through the trouble of, you know, providing two extra legal spots, then that would be fine. Can we add that as a, as a possibility for them?
I don't have particularly strong feelings, but for me, four patrons onsite is adequate, you know, on a daily basis, but I, I'm not dead-set on four or six. It's being a magic number.
That's four per hour, and the existing parking off-street, two spaces are already non-conforming.
Yeah, that's just what the code says, so I'm, I'm just.
So we're definitely talking about a further restriction beyond what the code.
Yeah.
Establishes as the bare minimum. And I, like, honestly, I don't have strong feelings by way of head nods. If, if the majority would like me to amend my motion, I'd probably be comfortable with that, but I don't like being a fence-sitter, but I am on that one. And my, my question related to maybe just the 49%, with conditional uses, do we do any subsequent inspections beyond the initial, like an annual thing?
If there's a complaint, we will.
But otherwise?
Otherwise, no.
Okay.
All right. Would you like to state the motion one more time, Mr. Anderson, with or without that last change suggested by Mr. Rowland?
Yeah, so just relative to the conditions, maybe I'll pick it up there. Literally adds is listed in the staff report, and just for the sake of floating it out there, I'm going to stay with four business-related vehicles at any one time. In fact, I'm going to maybe clarify by way of this and say four patrons and four business-related vehicles at any one time as condition number one, and then conditions number, numbers two and three wouldn't change. And the fourth condition would be that the applicant be limited to two promotional meetings each month.
Okay, let me just clarify those, those conditions as just stated for item one, that the business be limited to four business and four patrons, sorry, four business-related vehicles and four patrons at any one time. Is that correct?
Correct.
That all business activities, including promotional meetings, will end at 9:00 P.M. That the applicant will notify staff when special promotional meetings are scheduled, and that the applicant is permitted to have two promotional meetings per month.
That's correct, yeah.
Correct. Second?
Still seconded.
Seconded by Ms. Ellsworth. All those in favor of approving item one as so stated?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
One opposed. So the item carries, item one is approved, with four in favor and one opposed. All right, item two this evening. Ben Davis requests project plan approval for an office building and associated parking structure located at 182 North Freedom Boulevard in the downtown core DT2 zone. This affects the downtown neighborhood, and Mr. Yost is not presenting this.
No, it'll be Mr. Maxfield.
Mr. Maxfield, thank you.
Let me catch up with the slides here. Okay, we'll start off by orient, orientation of the site. This map shows where the Smiths is, as I think most people are familiar with, where the old Sears building was, and the site's directly to the south, across the street, across 200 North. This shows a little bit more detail how it sits on the site. In this picture, this shows the proposed buildings. The one on the right is the one on this site. The one on the left is a future proposal that would mirror the building sometime in the future. The one on the left is the north side of the street where the old Sears building was. This illustration shows the two, or two buildings, the office building, again, on the left, to the parking garage on the right, looking south. The reddish brick building in the back is the current Quartz building, the one they'll be moving from shortly. This shows the layout of the sites. The parking structure would have retail uses on its north side affronting 200 North and wrapping the corner onto Freedom Boulevard. The entrances for the parking, whoops, what did I do? I knew I'd do that. Trying to get the laser going on this one.
There's a laser right here.
Okay, we'll try it that way. On the parking structure, the entrances would be off Freedom Boulevard here on the left or west side, and also from an alley that would come in on the east side of the building. The applicant may discuss this, but there, there was a discussion before about whether they would continue this alley up to connect to 200 North. They may, we're looking at options where that would not connect, and so you'd have entrances coming in mid-block and then also directly off Freedom. The.
Could you go back one, Ryan?
Okay.
So the discussion was, has, there's been ongoing discussion about making 200 North Street more pedestrian-oriented, and by not allowing the, allowing the alley to connect to 200, we helped that goal. So the alley may only extend to the south and not through to the north. That's why that may happen. Okay.
So the, the street wouldn't be.
It would be accessible to pedestrians only?
Well, you wouldn't have a drive access that would interrupt the street on the sidewalk area.
Right, that vehicle access point interferes with pedestrian movement.
Right.
Pedestrian activity. So by allowing this to be reclaimed as pedestrian space, you can still exit the garage and go out that way.
I see.
This shows a little bit more of a close-up of the parking garage area. There we can see the retail shops and the parking structure. Parking structure is not enclosed. That would result in, in a lot of costs going up, because you'd have to meet fire codes and other things for enclosing the structure.
Ventilate it.
Ventilate it and do some other things. This shows more of the architecture. Here's where the retail wraps around the corner onto Freedom, but then the rest of Freedom would be open with the entrance to the parking garage here. This other one shows the east side, which, again, the retail is, is here along 200 North, and then the back alleyway with the entry into the parking garage. This one describes, I, I think you have the Development Review Committee's report where they asked some of the architectural issues be continued for another meeting, where they talk about those architectural issues, where this element extending down to the windowsill, looking at the details on the panel underneath the windows, the coffered recessed areas, did that be reduced, but emphasizing that each of these retail areas should almost develop kind of an individual entryway, and a lot of that's based on Center Street, the first block west, where you, you have a lot of the older buildings with different colors, a little bit different entries. And that was one of the main concerns on that building. Going in the office building, you can see the entrances would be out to a plaza area, one out to 100 West, one in the alley, and then one off the corner. This would be more the main entrance and with the elevator shafts and other utility features there. The building, the DRC committee talked about having a little more color breakup. I think they felt that because you're mirroring the building on the opposite side to try and make some kind of distinction between some of those buildings. They also talked about reducing some of the, I don't know, reducing, but changing that a little bit so it wasn't so formal off that bottom part, doing something a little bit different there. This one shows a little bit more with the landscaping. I think one of the features was the plaza they're trying to emphasize, where you could have a stage, you could have other things set up where the street could be blocked on weekends for farmer's market or other activities. And since it's not the main through-street through the area, some allowance, you know, that would probably work fairly well on there, but they tried to expand that out, and the plaza would be wider on the other side, too, where you could have more of a stage setting and other features in that area. Do you have any questions?
I have a quick question. Does Provo City have a public art requirement for, for example, the plaza where the alley is not coming through, but it's joining with the entrance to the building?
Not that I know of, no. I, I know we've talked about that, and obviously with the court building putting up something on their corner, you know.
Right.
Would that extend through other areas, but we have not implemented it or made ordinance requirement for that.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Mr. Rowland?
Could you say more about the comment in the staff report that is a response to, under the staff analysis section on page two, to question, or to the first item there in that list about entry compliance and, you know, does, does it sound like the east face is not in compliance with requirements for one pedestrian entrance to commercial space lobby residential every 50 feet?
Right, on the office building site.
Just talk me, I mean, it seemed, that was hard for me to make sense of, and just in the images, it was hard to read the, read how that was working in terms of one entrance every 50 feet.
Yes, and principally, the idea was you'd have more entrances along a street, so you wouldn't have, you know, walls and gaps. You'd have activity in and out and doing those things. So this is the one where you only have the one entrance off 100 West instead of a second entrance down here off the corner.
Say that again, you don't have one?
There isn't one, there's just the one. With the 50, with the other requirement, you'd have to have one down here on the south side somewhere.
So why is there not one?
Yep, that's the app.
Yeah, I, I just refer to the applicant on that and see if, you know, the design features.
Okay, so who's the applicant? That's a question, one you get up, that I would love, love to have addressed. And then what about the, just the second item? It looks like, and again, maybe this is for the applicant, but in terms of the transparent glass. glass stuff, it looks like
Oh.
That the applicant is not hitting that number on the west parking garage? Is that the only?
In the office building, and the applicant probably addressed this, he's familiar with it, but-
Yeah, the east office building, that's right.
Right, 70%. What do you call that restrictive? 70% opaque or what do you, the dark glass? But they're discussing whether or not to bring that back down to 60 or 50 or some other number, but.
Anyways, that's another question I have just about the, what appears to be non-compliance with those percentages of completely transparent glass on secondary streets, 30, you know, all that stuff when it's, when it's time.
Any other questions for staff? Mr. Anderson?
Follow-up to that question. So there are those two issues where there seems to be some conflict between the code and what's proposed tonight.
Right.
Are there any others that staff's aware of?
I think a lot of them, we're looking at, you know, like the penthouse area with the hiding the mechanical equipment and other things which are preferences or things we can work on through the project plan review by staff. You know, they're not critical to the site plan or things could be changed. We talked about different interpretations of the windows, you know, are they meeting the, are you talking about all the panes in an area or just single panes? Where if it's all the panes in the area, then it, you know, pretty well meets it. It's, you know, if the interpretation is different, then that would change that review. And I think, you know, there are some that we're looking at that aren't strict ordinance requirements, but they're more of these desires of the downtown development area, things we're trying to match up, you know, on how to do the street scapes as well as some of the building structure.
Subjective things?
Yes, subjective things.
So that gets a little bit messy, but I guess, as I understand it, with a proposed project plan, if it meets the standards, we approve it. If it doesn't meet the standards, we can't. Is that a fair way to say?
Yes.
Why then, I mean, I guess I'm just want a little bit more background. Why, why does this not meet the standards and that you recommended approval?
Well, we think a lot of those can be changed. You know, there are things that can be-
It's schematic design.
It's not going to change the nature of the project. But if those things are emphasized by planning commission, then the applicant would have to go back and put another door in, for instance, or do some of those things. Yeah, you're not waiving anything, but I think it's-
We'd be, from my view, we would be relying on staff to ensure that all of the provisions in the code are met, even if they're, like we've talked about, a couple that are not yet there.
And that's the one, the ones that are absolute, you know, we have to abide by that and you don't have the flexibility to do that. There are other ones that are subjective or planning commission's given the ability to adjust things. We'll have one later on tonight that talks about that.
And we can certainly talk about this in the, in our discussion later on, but it just seems to me that to do it, to do it that way tonight would be to do it differently than we've done in the past. I mean, I'm thinking of one particular smaller project that we heard, it was maybe it's been a year ago, on which I think, you know, I think Scott Bingham was not the direct applicant, but was a consultant or something. And, you know, we said, no, we're not gonna, we're not going to kind of pass this with, under the assumption that, you know, that'll get worked out by the staff later on. To do that tonight seems, seems awesome. So that's just something that's framing how I'm going to be hearing and thinking about what's happening here.
Mr. Maxfield?
Yes.
This is for project plan approval. Does that, that does not include elevations, it's more site planning, correct?
Well-
Building plan, site plan?
You mean in the sense of the DRC would like to see the materials back? Correct, I mean, you can't necessarily delegate it, but you can base your approval on their recommendations that they show it, much like, you know, you refer to the CRC Committee to meet the conditions. You can kind of refer to the Development Review Committee, or I'm sorry, Design Review Committee to, they're giving you the parameters of things they're looking at, you know, if that fits within what you think is appropriate.
And the DT2 zone has specific requirements for this project, correct? Any other questions for staff? Okay, if not, I would like to invite the applicant, Mr. Davis, to present his project.
Thanks. I think Brian did a great job presenting the information, so I'm happy to address the questions that have come up. Where would you like to start? Would you like to start with?
Wherever you want to start.
Mr. Rowan?
Yeah, with those two questions about the project's non-compliance with the requirement for entrance to commercial lobby residential unit every 50 feet along primary streets, 100 feet along secondary streets. So why, why is that not in compliance on the east face of the building? You know, where Brian kind of pointed it out and then the-
Glass.
The glass numbers.
Okay, so the first question, you know, I think a lot of it, you know, obviously there's no, you know, no mal-intent on any of these things. You know, we're still in schematic design and I guess that's more specific to the percentage of glass question. But as far as the doors go, you know, we're looking at this more as function, you know, to add another door there. You certainly could add a door there. We would have to inset it similar to the one that's inset up there. Oh, it's the one right here. See how this door, you know, it's inset here, there's some grade issues. And we also looked at the grading here. You can certainly add a door there and then the question, at least for us, is kind of, we understand the code. We definitely understand the code. The question is, is that, is that practical for, for this scenario, for the use? For example, obviously the courthouse does not have doors every 25 feet, right? Largely because of security and other functions of that particular building, right? Obviously, the state can do what they want and we all get, we all get that. They're not beholden to municipal code, but that's just one example. Similar to the Hyatt Place Hotel, which was recently completed, you know, there aren't doors every 25 feet largely-
15, yeah.
50? Oh, 50. Say 50, yeah. Every 50 feet largely, I think, because of the function of that building, how that function, how that building functions. So that's why currently we have not shown a door on, in this general area. Because it would, it would enter into the back of an office space.
Yeah, I mean, I certainly understand that response and that makes sense in terms of like, okay, we could put a door there if you really want, but it will serve no purpose. But for me, I mean, it's about meeting the spirit of the, I mean, the spirit of the law matters way more to me here and would have if we had heard, you know, plans for the courthouse, which we didn't, right? But I'm thinking about the pedestrians, you know, one of, one of my greatest, not greatest desires of my life, but I mean, as a, as a member of the planning commission, you know, I love the idea of adding depth to the pedestrian environment that's right now pretty shallow in our downtown, you know, mostly along Center Street and University Ave. We don't, we don't extend, we're not right now extending that pedestrian environment much beyond that. So the buildings that we have that come before us, I'm really interested in them understanding the spirit of, of the public, you know, creating buildings that facilitate or are beneficial to the public, that facilitate people walking and, and so I don't care, I don't care about the letter of the law. It's, the principle matters to me because of the spirit of what we're trying to go for in our downtown zone. So to ignore that, I mean, that's what I would love to see the building try to figure out rather than just sticking a door there. I mean, that's true, that would be, that would be purposeless. But I'm, what I'm saying to you is, I'd like you to figure out how you can, you know, make that particular side of the building as pedestrian friendly as possible.
Okay.
So that's where I'm coming from, if that makes sense.
Yeah, yeah, totally, totally understand. You know, we're definitely really trying to enforce the walkability of this, of this area, trying to extend the walkability from Center Street. We've worked really closely with engineering, they've been great to work with on making some modifications to this road to make it more, to calm the traffic, to, you know, allow for outdoor dining, a really dynamic space here along the parking garage, which I think the code is great for that. And I think, you know, a door every 25, 50 feet obviously makes a ton of sense right here. You know, I'll just be completely honest, to try and squeeze in a retail space over here to kind of make, reinforce that walkability, you know, with outdoor patio space kind of in this area, that, that's really tough, you know, to do from an economic standpoint here on 100 West where there's not currently a lot of that. So I would love to talk more about how, rather than just a door, how, how we can be a little more creative of, you know, encouraging the pedestrian experience here. Because we totally, we're totally for that. That's what we're trying to do here. We're just trying to put it all into context. And I guess frankly, our, our energy is more, more in this area rather than here, but.
Yeah, and that's great. I mean, I love the energy where it's been and I would say, you know, I understand the economic argument, but I, but as a member of the planning commission who's supposed to advocate for the public, I'd say put energy into 100 West as well. I mean, I, I think that matters to me. Great, you know, 200, 200 makes sense. Freedom makes sense as a place to put energy. But to then say, well, let us off the hook because we've, and I know that's not literally what you're saying, but I'm saying, well, let's, let's figure out a way to make the, make it work. And if that means you don't make as much money, I'm fine with that as, as someone who's trying to defend the public and say, I want spaces that are pleasing and satisfying to the public, even if you don't get as much money in your pocket in the end. That's, you know, that's what I'm saying.
So beyond the required, you know, landscaping, what, help me understand a little bit more of kind of what you would specifically look for in this area beyond kind of the landscaping and, you know, the facade improvements on the, on the building? Are we looking for like tables and chairs? I mean, are there, are there specific examples that you're looking for? Just so I understand a little better.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think that we, yeah, I'll get to that. But I certainly think what we're trying to avoid is the kind of monolithic wall, just not much that's of interest, not much going on, not much opportunity to engage with people, you know, inside the walls, you know, that's, that's what I would say we're, we're trying to avoid. So if that, if that makes sense. So, you know, anything really that would, that would facilitate that, you know, kind of the visual connection through windows, the, a kind of a more varied landscape other than, I mean, trees are nice and stuff, but, you know, walking past a long period of kind of wall where you don't, that's not broken up by much variety, both kind of activity, human activity and other visual things that break it up, make it interesting. I think that's what, the spirit of the law for me is that we're, that we're talking about here.
That is helpful and specific to, you know, the, the activity inside the building. We've walked the site yesterday with, with Scott Bingham, walked a similar site that the Grove Tower in Pleasant Grove, just east of the interchange there. We're proposing to use that same glass on this building as, is, so Scott had a concern that the glass was too dark. But after walking the site with him yesterday, I believe he sent an email to staff saying he was, he was comfortable with that selection of glass largely because of the connection that you have from the sidewalk into the space. It's not opaque glass, you know, it's, it's transparent, so you can see into what's happening inside the office building here. So, if that helps.
Ms. Ellsworth?
Yeah, I 100% agree with Mr. Rowan. I think if we create this awesome pedestrian space on Second North, but we don't have any connectivity, it's wasted and it's, it's going to be perceived as lip service only, right? So we really need that connectivity for a pedestrian. And if we go just a block south where I think it's, is it the Hyatt, the red brick? Older hotel? I've walked-
Marriott?
It's a Marriott, you're right, yeah. So I've walked on the like western sidewalk right there and it's a canyon, right? There's just a wall, it's completely blank, it's completely brick. And pedestrians want to speed up and get out of that space. They don't want to spend time in that space. And so I'm afraid that we're doing that on both sides of this project, on Freedom and on, what is it? What's the other half?
100 West.
On 100 West, yeah. And so, yeah, I'm really not, I'm really not a fan of just creating these canyons for pedestrians. They're not going to use them. And then we'll just have this empty pedestrian oriented space on Second North.
Sure. And if I could add to that too, if Brian, if you want to go back to the site plan, maybe I'll mention this as well. So as far as connectivity, we think this site is, is really connected, to be honest with you. You know, we have the 400 square foot blocks here in Provo, which is awesome for, for walkability, much better than what you get in Salt Lake with their 660 square blocks. What Bill was mentioning here is we're looking hard at closing this driveway so that the pedestrian connection flows through here. There's no traffic conflicts. Just, just verifying with our traffic engineer to see if, you know, we run into any conflicts by having, you know, one entrance here and then another here. So traffic coming through here and then entering here. We think that the connectivity would be much better. I personally would love, I want this, to close this down. It opens up this whole plaza area, which is great. And so when we do phase two, we have a much larger plaza with which to, to do events and for people to mingle and in that space. And as far as the pedestrians coming, you know, we break this block into four with pedestrian connectivity. We have obviously the street here, we have the street here, the street here. There will also be a walkway between the Hyatt and the parking garage. Obviously, it's a narrow space, so it's going to be, have to be treated really well, well-lit, landscaping eyes on that space. But we are having a pedestrian connection through here as well as through here. So we're breaking this up, I think, the best that we can, so.
And I think that's great, yeah. But just to reiterate what Ms. Ellsworth is saying, to do all that and then to ignore this is silly, you know? I mean, to, again, I don't want to be, be super critical, I'm not trying to do that. I love, this, this, this is great. I love that there's a pathway there, pathway here. Breaking that up is exactly what we want to see happening. And so to do all that and then perhaps not consider that as well, why not, why not just do that a little bit, you know, spend a little more time over here?
And I think we are considering this. If we're just talking about just adding a door versus, you know, all the brick and the glass and the transparent glass and the landscaping on that side, I mean, I think we are addressing that. We're not, that's just not a blank wall on that side, right?
I think you're on the right track, but I still am thinking about the east face of the conference center, the Utah Valley Conference Center. And they do have glass there and there are like some probably unused doors there and it's still pretty empty. So I'm still trying to think, how can we get pedestrians to use that space? What makes it uncomfortable for them? Is it just because there is nothing there for them to interact with? And, and how are we going to keep people? I mean, we have, this is a great destination and Center Street is a great destination, so we want to make sure that the flows between there are really open and comfortable for pedestrians.
Yep, I agree.
I have a couple of questions.
Okay, sure.
They concern, the first concern is the parking deck. I was just curious, the depth and the height of the retail spaces you've carved out at street level?
Oh, let's see, the depth, oh, I'd have to look on the plan.
Yeah, we don't have dimensions on ours.
Not there. The height is, I want to say 18 to 20 feet, so ample headspace in the, in the retail. As far as the depth, I want to say we're about 50 feet if I were to best guess, and I apologize, I don't have that write-off. I have a set of plans that I can look at if you'd like, but.
And I think, I think one of the comments I'm hearing from some of my fellow commissioners concern, and I know you're in schematic design, so we're early in, but it's, it's a plan to maximize square footage on a small urban block. And so there's no stepping of the facade in and out to the setback. And I think that's what people are responding to is being kind of dudning to the pedestrian or to street life and that if there could be a way that you could find to step- And that if there could be a way that you could find to step that facade in and out and perhaps um, activate the surface of the building, whether that carries all the way up or car- carries up to a, a certain level, uh, would help articulate that building and make it a whole lot more interesting to pedestrians.
Okay.
Um, I'm, I'm happy to hear you're using transparent glass uh, because you do want that visual connection with the street and that's very important. And then I had one question about the railings that are being used on the garage. And I'm not overly familiar with the DT two design requirements for parking decks. Um, is that just open cable rail? And then sort of simulated mullions?
Right. And then, then that's a requirement of the code, yep.
Okay.
There's a great example of that similar treatment in Sugar House on Wilmington Avenue.
Yep.
I don't know if that's kind of what we modeled this after, but.
Can I just add uh, to what you said, Ms. Jensen, and that is that, I mean, if we can go to an, an image that has kind of a, a wider shot of the, yeah, something like that. And as, as I was looking at these images, which I, I mean, the staff report that we got, um, it was hard to make sense of the, how everything fit together just because of the way that things were broken up. So I'm, I'm just responding right now to what I'm seeing. Um, but I, I mean, I think uh, Ms. Jensen's comment kind of captures some of my responses, like this is, uh, I don't want to be insulting, this is like, mm, like, something's missed. It feels, it feels just like something's missing to me. And I think it has to do with just the flatness of, of everything. I'm not a huge fan either of, of the, the kind of beige and darkness. I mean, it, it just feels very blah to me. Uh, to be, and I don't know, I, I'm not on the design committee and, and, um, but, but, but I think that, that captures what we're talking about, not just along that street. But for me, the whole project just feels very, a, a flat surface that, that doesn't, it just isn't very engaging for me. And we may be way too far along and certainly we, you know, if it meets, uh, you know, the requirements and all that stuff, there's, there, that would be my input on the, on the design is just, it, it, at least in the images, it just isn't engaging my eye. It just seems, everything's the same flat space. Um, that, that I, I, I wish were different. I wish there was more kind of varied, more in, yeah, I, I, I wish were more interesting. And it, it just feels very, um, very bland to me.
I had one more question.
Sure.
Uh, if we could go to the floor plan of the office building? If you could just walk me through service, how you're servicing the office building?
As far as.
Deliveries, uh, trash?
Oh, yeah.
All of that.
So, I mean, service could come through this front door, this side, uh, the trash will be shared in the, it's, it's housed in the parking garage. And it's serviced um, from the alleyway, if you want to go back, Brian. So this is where we have our trash here and it'll serve the parking structure as well as the office.
So they're carting it?
Yeah.
Out, okay.
Yep.
And any, any deliveries move in, office tenants, things like that to the alley?
I guess the idea is they could, they could use the alley, either the north-south alley here or the east-west alley. Uh, potentially, uh, you know, two hundred north up here. We've talked about maybe carving out uh, some bulb outs possibly here where, you know, a, a delivery truck could, could stage temporarily on the street. Uh, it could happen from there as well.
Thank you.
I think uh, one of the things you, you know, they would be allowed to do docking off this edge, off that alley. But, you know, I think it just depends on what you look at as tenants or something.
Right.
Um, and this might be a little premature, uh, but I wanted to concur with Mr. Rowan's comments about the facade of the building. Um, when he mentioned that, I realized that those images, the glassy ones, they look just like every, almost every building in Lehigh and those tech parks, right?
As you're passing on the freeway.
Yeah, yeah, you're driving there and you don't know who's who or what's what because they're just all this, they're all built in the exact same year. They look identical and then they're just gonna, they just have very little character and um, it's such a phenomenal project, I think. And it's so close to our downtown where we want, you know, the best.
Right.
The best face forward. So maybe there's something that could be addressed there in future phases.
I, I will say, you know, this is, you know, I know you're just seeing it now and it may seem like we just plopped it in.
No, I'm not, I'm not accusing you of that.
No, but it's just, I just wanted, I do want to say that we've, you know, it's been probably sixteen months that we work with staff, the Timp neighborhood, the downtown neighborhood, um, to, to get, to get to, to this. So just, and, and I know it's hard for you just, just seeing it though. So, but I just wanted to mention that. This is a product of, you know, a lot of people coming together on, on a design, so.
I mean, I, I think that, and what I would say, you know, I like the, I like the um, spacing, the, the kind of the way that it sits on the property. I really like that um, about it. And again, I love the alleys and, and all that stuff. I think that's great. But, but I think uh, Ms. Ellsworth is right. I mean, this looks like a, a building you drive by on the freeway in Lehigh rather than a building in the downtown. I mean, you, you could literally, with the exception of the, of the way that it's kind of, um, you know, inset there, you could plop this uh, in, in Lehigh right along the freeway and it would fit perfectly and I, I don't want that in my downtown. And I, I, again, I'm not trying to be offensive. I'm just trying to say our job is to, is to protect the public and that's just my opinion. If, if everyone in the Timp neighborhood plan, you know, loves this and staff loves this and I'm just saying, uh, for me, that's, that's my just initial response to it and um, and for whatever input that's worth, I mean, that's, that's how I'm responding.
Any other questions for the applicant from commissioners? If not, thank you very much. At this time, I'd like to invite the neighborhood chair for the downtown neighborhood to come forward. Are there any other neighborhood chairs present who would like to speak to this item? Are there any members of the public who would like to speak to this item? See, no, no, excuse me, turn this back over to the commissioners for discussion and a motion.
It seems to me like there are really just two questions, whether we want to continue this so that the applicant can meet all of the requirements expressly and be able to demonstrate that to us before we approve the, the project plan? Or do we want to defer to staff on those details and let them make sure that the, the criteria are met before it's approved?
Um, we gave a, uh, I mean, not that it matters, but we gave that other developer, I think it was February fourteenth, um, an hour and a half worth of discussion when he wasn't meeting and made him come back. And he was a lot smaller of a developer, but, so I think we, I'd like to see the code met before we approve it.
Any other comments, discussion? Mr. Rowan?
Is, is it fair to ask this staff, just as a follow-up, any, any additional input to the conversation we just had with, with applicant in terms of, um, in, in terms of that? Some of the issues that we raised, I mean, what has been the internal discussion and/or discussion with applicant and/or discussion with the neighborhood? I, I would love your characterization of uh, the kind of history of how you arrived at this particular, uh, like the facade of the building, you know, did, did, I'm, I'm not trying to call his bluff by any means, I just would, would love a little bit more detail about, you know, is this a project that people uh, really are thrilled about in terms of that facade when they've seen images? And not, again, just as a way to check my own kind of initial response against other, other responses for people that have to live with this uh, project in a way that, you know, I don't, who live closer and, and so forth.
Yeah, I think it's been adequately or appropriately represented that there's been many months of uh, meetings and, and discussions and design ideas with the staff. Um, this isn't something new and this isn't something that just developed in the last month or two months or even six months. Um, uh, so it has been uh, very re- reiterative. Uh, on the other hand, um, some areas like the second west, first west facade, you know, have been discussed and um, suggested that might be a problem as this goes forward. So that's where we are now.
So the, uh, again, just for, for pushing for a little bit more detail, so has, again, for example, has the Timp neighborhood been shown images and, and so forth and to, to, what are the, what are the responses been like as they've seen what we've seen tonight and, and so forth?
Uh, they have been involved. I'm not um, specifically familiar with their response, but I know that Shannon Bingham has been involved and her husband Scott Bingham is on the design committee.
Right. Yeah, okay.
Particularly where we meet every couple of weeks, um, and some of the changes that would need to be made comply with the code, they might take longer than that, might not. I'm really comfortable to the extent that I'm ready to make a motion if we're ready to entertain that.
Please.
So, on item number two, the proposed project plan approval for an office building and associated parking structure at one eighty-two North Freedom Boulevard, I move that we continue the proposal. Not to a date specific, but just until staff has found that the proposed plans complied with uh, the applicable standards.
I'll second that.
Okay, the proposal is to continue item two, seconded by Ms. Ellsworth. All those in favor of continuing item two?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed to continuing item two?
Aye.
Aye. So we have three who would like to continue and two who would not. So the item's continued. And we have not established a date for the continuance, correct?
Correct.
Thank you. Okay, the next uh, three items I will read in together. They're all related. Item number three, Ridge Point Management Group's request an ordinance text amendment to adopt a new zone. The Spring Creek High Occupancy Performance Redevelopment Option Zone fourteen point fifty thirty-six for a proposed sixty-two unit townhome project located at sixteen oh six South State Street in the Spring Creek neighborhood. Item four, Ridge Point Management Group requests concept plan approval for a sixty-two unit townhome development located at sixteen oh six South State Street in a proposed Spring Creek High Occupancy Project Redevelopment Option Pro fourteen point fifty thirty-six zone in the Spring Creek neighborhood. And item five, Ridge Point Management Group requests a zone change from R one ten to Spring Creek High Occupancy Performance Redevelopment Option Pro fourteen fifty thirty-six zone, consisting of sixty-two one-family attached townhomes development on approximately six point twenty-one acres located at sixteen oh six South State Street in the Spring Creek neighborhood. And Mr. Weaver will present this item.
So before it gets started, non-chairman, just let me point out that um, items three and five will be recommendations. Item four is a decision that you would make yourself. We would like to have three motions on this, uh, even though the presentation will be given overall, three items at once. Thank you.
The applicant requested for a concept plan, a rezone and a ordinance text amendment for a sixty-two unit townhome project located at six, sixteen oh six South State Street in a currently R one ten zone in the Spring Creek neighborhood. It's proposed that project will be in a new zone, the Spring Creek High Occupancy Pro Zone. The project plan includes fourteen townhome buildings on the site ranging from four to six units per, per building. Each unit will be approximately twenty-two feet wide by forty feet in length. They, there will be not more than ten dwelling units per acre. The occupancy will be restricted to a one-family unit or four singles per unit. Each unit has amenities spaces as a rooftop terrace for each individual unit on the fourth floor of each unit. Outdoor amenities include areas such as uh, seating areas and a gathering area and a pickleball court landscaping around the, around the buildings, et cetera. Each unit will also have four bedrooms and four bathrooms within each unit. Parking is provided that there will be two hundred and sixty-eight parking stalls. One hundred and forty-four of these parking stalls will be service stalls. Another one hundred and twenty-four will be in garages. So each unit will consist of having a two-car garage. And each unit will have two additional surface parking stalls per unit with point two-five parking stalls for visitor parking, which equates to twenty visitor parking stalls. So that meets the minimum requirements for the proposed zone of two sixty-eight parking stalls. The property can be, will be accessed off of State Street on the east side. And they will be building a road on south of the property and then there will be a new road constructed on the west of the property adjacent to the railroad. So that will provide them having two points of access which will connect further down onto, as you go south on the new road on the west to sixteen forty south. These are social rendings of the prop- property or project. This is looking. So you can kind of see there is the rooftop terrace up on the corners, um, with the glass at the top. So maximum height of these buildings is thirty-eight feet. The code that they've drafted is forty-five feet. So they're below their maximum height. And the project plan meets the setback requirements for the proposed ordinance text. So accessing the garages will be done primarily through an alleyway um, between each unit. As, as you could see on the concept plan, um, they're sure there will be no parking allowed back there. It'll just be driving to access each individual units. This is looking at um, just site plan for each unit, garage and bedroom on the first level. Next level has common space, kitchen, living, et cetera. Third floor has three bedrooms, three bathrooms. And the top has a roof deck. Front elevation. Rear elevation. And both side elevation of the project. So the southeast master, southeast neighborhood plan does identify this area as a MDR with a batch, batching overlay for this. Should this project coincide with what the southeast master plan has been drafted to for future land uses within this area?
Do you know the space between these two buildings, what the width is?
I believe it's ten feet.
Okay.
Any other questions for staff? Ms. Ellsworth?
I don't have the future land use map in front of me, but what, remind me what our, our goals are on State Street?
What our goals are on State Street?
Yeah, what are the future land uses that are most desirable there?
Well, the general plan still shows mixed use, so it could be residential or commercial. There's a design corridor for South State.
There's a design corridor for South State Street, which this complies with. That's why the building closest to State Street is pulled towards the street and has the fronts of units on State Street. Certainly, it's our objective to try to improve the look of State Street over time. It's been a distressed area for many years, and we're trying to do something better than that. I just would like to point out one thing, on the pro-zone, pro-zones are usually very site-specific and project-specific, but because this whole area in the neighborhood plan was identified for this type of housing, we've tried to work with the developer to come up with a pro-zone that will be used by more than one project. So because of that, we really need to have an open space requirement in the zone, which isn't there now. So we would recommend that there be a 10% open space requirement, 10% of the building square footage, which is consistent with several other multifamily zones we have, and this project is in compliance with that standard. Their open space is masked through this area here. That's why there's no building here and no building there. And that's an important part to us, an important part of the open space, is that it's masked in a way where people really can gather and have some type of neighborhood function. So we feel like that they've achieved that goal and that they're consistent with that standard, so that standard should be added to the zones. The next person that comes along and wants to do a similar project, we can use the same zone for theirs.
But there's a pickleball court taking up all of the room in the open space, right?
Yeah, which, I think we need two of those, in my opinion, but I'm biased.
So currently, the text amendment does not include the requirement for open space?
Right, their proposed pro-zone doesn't have that, so I think that needs to be added, that should be part of the motion.
And if we add that, should it be on, how do we say, like an attached part of the parcel? Because I can see this open space, I think it's open space, like at this drainage point down here, this little corner.
Mr. Weaver actually has some actual language.
Yeah, because this corner right here, to me, has very little relationship with the rest of this. I don't see, I don't see occupants really engaging with this space when it's next to like what a railroad track and a, and a storage unit.
Dog park.
It's pretty much a perfect baseball diamond.
You guys.
I would suggest that we just add the same open space requirement or language from the MDR zone or HDR zone, because that not only says there's a 10% standard, but it says it has to be masked in a way that's functional and usable.
Okay. Yeah, I assume this is part of the site, right? These awkward little corners?
Yes, yeah, they are.
Yeah, super awkward.
The batching singles, that's what allows for more than the three.
And that was specifically designated in the neighborhood plan, that this area would be eligible to apply for batching singles. Now, where they park it at 4.25 spaces per unit, which is higher by far than anything else we've ever had in the city, so I think they've got sufficient parking on site. I think it's very likely that just because of convenience, visitors may well want to park along the street, and personally, I think that's actually not a bad thing, because it will slow down traffic when it gets to a point where traffic is being used on that street. It's, I think with parallel parking, the street will still function fine, and that may be a more convenient place for visitors to park. We don't count that in our calculations at all, that, you can't count that, but I think in reality, that may happen.
Any other comments, questions for Steph?
Yes, I'll disconnect.
All right, commissioners, any other questions, comments? Okay, I'd like to invite the applicant, Ridge Point Management Group, to present items three, four, and five.
My name is Heath Johnston. I'm a developer. So the, the presentation was a very good overview. I would like to add that when we started this process, doing a lot of multifamily, this was something different than we've ever done, in that we have large bedrooms with private bathrooms, the way the kitchen layout, all the little things to this that we probably don't want to go over all the details, but it was, it was truly designed for young professionals, single professionals. We held two focus groups, and usually our focus groups run about a half hour, and I have to bribe people to come. And these ran for about two hours each, and we had pages of notes. This customer of ours, this group, these citizens in your city, know exactly what they want, and so we really tried to give them what they want within reason. One of the big issues they have is the same that the city and all of us have, and that's parking. And so, as was stated, we have a great deal of parking, and we have, once again, the young professionals, they appreciate having two garage stalls per unit. Oftentimes, these units have one garage, and it's, it's very small, and so we've tried to meet as many needs as possible and still give a product that they can afford and stay within the price range of their budget. That being said, they, they changed dramatically what we've, what we've tried to do, and it's, you know, we originally started out with something more dense, underground parking, and they totally disliked that. So we've tried to, can we make everybody happy? We can't, but we feel like we've, we've done a good job in doing that. And comments too of this, this little piece down on the corner, that's our stormed attention, and it's, right now, if you go walk back there, it's quite interesting. So we're in a process of cleaning up. We've hauled tons of tires off, this has kind of been a dumping site, and we've learned a lot about the site as we've done that, and our favorite tree, Russian olives, which are dangerous to cut down. But as we've done that, we've been cleaning it up, and, and we feel confident that we can turn this into a very nice project. One last thing that I wanted to mention is the rooftop living, which is becoming much more of a thing across our great country. As we've looked at that, if you think of social settings, a lot of times, we, we tend to hang out with people that are similar to us and in smaller groups. It's not often that we're in large groups, if that, it's usually some social event or a church gathering, which we, we do that with our open space, but we're really hoping that this will be, and it was, it was well-received, that most of these will have a little fire pit on top, and it'll be an area where they'll be able to congregate and use 12 months of the year, short of a rainstorm. So that's our basic rundown on the project.
Thank you. Any questions from the commissioners? Ms. Ellsworth?
Yeah, I mean, I think this is an exciting project, and anything that, you know, improves State Street is a win, and definitely had my ear to the ground on this project and the customer here. I'm curious about the rooftop view. The rooftop view would be of what, of the railroad, of State Street, and of storage units? Because the mountains are not as close as are depicted in this rendering.
Yes, your views are of the project itself. If you're on the south part or the west side, you will see railroad track, landscaping trees as they grow. But our greatest feature, no matter where you're at in this valley or the mountains, we are in that type of redevelopment area, and so there's, there's things we're improving on. The storage units to the north, this are brand-new and look nice, they've done a good job there for storage units, and, and so we're, we're doing the best we can with what we have, and we're in that zone, if you will, that area of your city where this is, this is an issue. The thing that we've been very amazed with is how much they, the customer knows what they want, and so we've tried to, to give them that. The other thing that I failed to point out, that we've been talking with our neighborhood chair, who's been wonderful, is we're adjusting the colors and some of the textures down low to soften it a little bit and, and more in line with, with what the neighborhood wants. It's always hard to get the colors just right, especially on printouts, but we're making a few adjustments there, just so you're aware.
Yeah, that looks awesome. Tell me about this 10-foot space between the units, why is it, why do we have two four-packs instead of one eight-pack, and how safe is this kind of 10-foot-wide area?
It breaks up the buildings a bit, and it also makes it easier for financing for individuals to own. It's just good practice, and the other thing is, you know, we've done the aplexes before, but a lot of times it gets, it's not as attractive, I think. It also makes it to where if you're, if you're going back and forth, you're not walking all the way around the building, and so it gives a little bit more for the pedestrian feel.
You'll see, a lot of developers who gravitate towards this because that means 50% of your units have the ability to have windows on the sides, not just front and back.
And I'll just add, I really like everything about what I'm seeing. I love the way they're situated on the parcel of property at an angle. I think that's nice. You know, the way that they're kind of parallel with State Street, even though the kind of slice, the east-west slice isn't, you know, comes in at, at an angle to State Street, so I really like that. I love, I mean, I love for those reasons, the break in the building's additional windows, don't have to walk all the way around the buildings. I mean, this looks, I love, I mean, in the context, this is a very different product than the last building we were talking about, but I love all the varied dimensions and depths to the building. I think you've done a really nice job with that. Yeah, I really like it. The size of the windows are great, I love that there's that much light going into those places, into those interior spaces. I mean, it just looks, looks really nice to me.
By the time a project gets to you, usually it's the fourth or fifth or sixth version of a plan, and this is another case of that. The developer and the staff have been working for many months to get to this point. This isn't something that happened every night. Fortunately, we've had a developer who's been willing to work cooperatively with, cooperatively with us.
Yeah, it sounds like it. I love that you had the focus groups, I mean, that's great. Yeah, and I love the, the overhang on the, you know, on the rooftop space, you know, you could duck in there where there to be, and still be outside where there to be in inclement weather, I just, yeah, I think this looks fantastic. I really like it.
Thank you.
I have one more question. And I, in the focus groups, how did, I mean, did they request a pickleball court? No, but like legitimately, because I don't know anyone that besides these guys that play pickleball.
So as a developer, I'm going to share with you that I've done several projects, and I didn't even know what pickleball was a few years ago, and now it's, it's becoming not just a requirement, but almost a must-have, and the range of age of those playing it is astounding. We have a project in another city where we're putting in like six, and it's partly because staff loves them so much. But, but there, when we do our focus groups, I am amazed at how many of our younger people are playing. It started out older, but it has really moved and caught on. Tournaments, everything, it's...
You should try it, Shannon. I mean, have you played pickleball before?
I think maybe in middle school.
It didn't exist.
I want to know what was, what were the unreasonable requests that you received? You said at the beginning that you accommodated all the reasonable requests.
Well, it's, they wished we were a little bit farther north. They weren't excited about the railroad tracks, as a developer, nor were we. We've, we've had to kind of work around that, but as, as you find, you go into some of the parts in Sugar House and Salt Lake, we have older homes, and all of a sudden, you'll see a condo project go up, and it's amazing how that starts to happen in redevelopment. I'm usually slow and scared to do that, but on this site with this customer base, I think we're at the beginning of this movement in this area of your city. And so I'm, I'm hopeful, and to Bill's comment about the zone, I, there's a lot of time put into it and revisions between us and staff, and so I think it's a good model with a balance, because if you don't have enough density, you can't give them a product they can afford to stay in.
Right.
And so we'll be right, and they hate to be referred to as students, but the price point will be comparable to, to what some students are paying for really small rooms and shared bathrooms. So it was a good balance and a good mix.
I'll just add that I appreciate that you rear-loaded the units, so you actually have a semblance of, you know, a front face to the building that's not just a driveway or a garage, and the architectural massing and articulation is very well done.
Thank you.
I think it's a nice project. Any other comments, questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you, Mr. Johnston. All right, at this point, I would like to invite the Spring Creek Neighborhood Chair to speak to items three, four, and five.
This is something that has been a lengthy process, and you've already heard that. So we're excited about this. We're happy to get behind it 100%. Our neighborhood needs this. I think it will be a great asset to the neighborhood and to the southeast gateway to the city. I don't know what else to say. It aligns with the general plan, it aligns with the southeast area plan, everything is good on this. I really believe that. So we've seen a lot of things, and, and this is really good.
Great.
I support it.
Thank you. Are there any other neighborhood chairs present who would like to speak to these items? Are there any members of the public who would like to speak to these items? And please state your name for the record.
So my name is Riley Sorensen.
And I'm Debbie Sorensen. We're owners of Bear River Storage, and we just are excited about this whole project. We think it's beautiful, we think it's something that the neighborhood will like and will all enjoy and benefit from. Riley's going to speak to some issues, just some concerns that we have and questions that we want answered.
Yeah, so we just have, we also own this 1616, which is a little carve-out here on the southeast side, and just wondering, is that going to be usable for a shared access in the future for that property, or how does that work? How will that work?
Mr. Day here?
I don't know, we don't, engineering has left, it looks like.
Okay.
That's an issue for engineering, I'm sorry, planning can't answer that.
Okay, also, is there fill that's going to be brought into this project, or is it just built on the level, the ground level that it is?
Then you'd have to ask the developer or the engineers.
Okay, well, yeah, I guess we need the engineer here. And then also, because basically what we've got here is what we're looking at, is we have this retaining wall on the north side that you see kind of where the roadway is, and so we built that, we've got about an 18-inch gap between, oh, yes, thanks. So it's just right here, this wall right here, we have a retaining wall there that we've constructed. We have about an 18-inch gap between our property and this new development, and so what we're trying to do is work out, one, are they going to be able to contain their roadway and material on their property and not encumber our property and wall? And if not, there likely needs to be some agreement in place. We're not opposed to it, we just haven't heard from the developers and kind of want some clarification on that. And so that's, because we do have some liability on that 18-inch, we built off our property line in order to not have any issues with our parcel and their parcels, so we're just looking for clarification on just those few things, but we need, I guess, engineering.
Great, thank you.
No one's here to answer our questions?
We'll take the public input, and then the developer or the engineers will come up and answer all the questions that could ask, so they will get answered.
I just want to mention, the wall that he's talking about was never in our original plan. The Petrofessis, Petrofessa family were the original owners, and they owned that property. They're considerably lower grade than ourselves, and so we, we were in, with agreement with them in the beginning to, to just use the fill that had to be brought up in our property, in our storage facility, and it was going to spill over and be used for them, you know, in order to bring the grade up of their property. That soon changed with, with new buyers from them, and so that changed, and the new buyers arbitrarily required us, like within five days, to get off the dirt that we had had an original agreement to keep on, to get that... agreement to keep on, to get that off and to, and to, they forced us to put a retaining wall to retain that, that wall along there that we, was not in our original plans, that cost us roughly $270,000 that we had not planned on. So we just want to know what.
So, yeah, so we're just looking at if, if it would be possible and why there wasn't any discussion to have a joint cost on that wall that's they're going to use as, as part of their requirement to build what they're building. That wall's been, typically if you have a wall, you, you know, you share a cost in that if you're going to use it on your development. And since it's not exactly on the property line, it's offset some inches there. We feel that there should have been some dialogue there or possibly still could be in the future. We don't, we're not looking to incur more costs on them and have them build a wall on our wall, because it's not practical. But an agreement in place, some cost sharing on that expensive wall, having them being able to use it, since we're clearly in industrial zone, they're clearly a residential zone. There's two, it's not, it's not all residential to where it's, in our minds, I, we're definitely two different parcel and different uses. So that's what we'd like some discussion on is just to see if that could be talked about or considered.
Great. Thank you. Are there any other members of the public who would like to speak to these items? Seeing none, I'll close it to public comment and invite the applicant again to address any of those concerns he heard expressed.
So on, on projects that I have to build retaining walls, I'm always retaining my side. Our level hasn't changed, so there was no need for us to do that. And I can't speak to the former owners, but when we closed on it, I think their thought was that they would, they would take and grade it down and slope it. And as you can see our site, if we did that, that would greatly impact us in that we would, we wouldn't be able to have that road there. And so retention usually is you retain your property. If you're building, if you're in a neighborhood on a slope, if you're the one retaining, you're doing that yourself. And that's what you do to make that lot or your property more usable. As for us, we did not need that, and we have not, we're not anticipating bringing in fill or anything. We're, we're keeping it pretty much in line with the way the flow of the property goes. So we, we don't see that that being anything that benefits us. It was to, for their project and doesn't do anything for our project.
What about fill? Are you bringing in fill?
We're not anticipating. I've got my engineer here, and I leaned over and asked him. And as of right now, we're not planning on bringing in any fill. That doesn't mean that it won't slope a little bit, but our intent right now is, is not to, as we get closer to our final design, we can answer that better.
And I guess we can't answer the question about the curb cut on State Street?
Right.
So we'll have to defer to engineering on that.
I, I would like to point out, because when this goes back to staff, and there's lots of hands on the, on this front piece right here, this is the right way. We, if you've been to the site, there's, there's tires all along here that we've hauled away. Right here, the, not the owner, but the tenant has pushed probably four dumpsters worth of garbage and a remodel onto our property. So we're, we're constantly dealing with this. And one of the things we're anxious to do is to get underway so that we're no longer a dumping ground.
Right. Thank you. All right, commissioners, Mr. Pepperoni.
Just to answer the question about fencing, this is a very unique and confusing situation in that when Bear River Storage went in on the north, both these properties were zoned industrial, M1. If they had been different zones, Bear River Storage would have been required to put a masonry wall along here on top of the retaining wall, if they had been different zones. But they weren't. They were both M1. Now, although that's an industrial use, it's a, they're storage units. All this property is zoned R110. You remember the city council intentionally owned this, about 80 acres, rezoned about 80 acres of this area from industrial to R110 so that we wouldn't keep getting more industrial uses going in. And they zoned it R110 as a holding zone and as a, to send a message to the development community that the city's open to residential uses there. The general plan and the neighborhood plan now say that it should be this type of housing and the MDR range, which is what this is. In terms of buffering that you might normally get between different uses like this, the fact that there's a private driveway here and a road there, I think that does a lot to accomplish the buffering that you would normally look for. That pulls the buildings away from the property line, and all of these buildings are farther away from the property line than the transitional regulations would require. So we just didn't feel that the code requirements, the talk about fencing, applied in this situation. And that's why it wasn't put as a condition of approval on this developer. I certainly understand Bear River's desire to be protected. But if you think about it, storage units are a pretty low-impact industrial use, a lot lower impact than the towing yards you guys just debated a couple of weeks ago, right? You don't have a lot of traffic going in and out. You don't have tow trucks with lights and backup sirens, horns, you know, going all hours of the night. So at least it's less, more innocuous than a lot of other industrial uses that could have been built in the M1 zone.
Thank you.
We have been able to get in contact with the engineer. We can either get him to head back in or just ask him.
Any preference on that?
Not to head back in on a straightforward question like that.
Yeah.
Call him in and I.
I think that would be fine.
It's dealing with the drive entry?
The entry off State Street.
Going off State Street that they're showing?
Just to the north of the project.
Is that?
The question was, will they be allowed to have access off the side street? That was the question.
Is that a question that the public could address with the engineer at another time? Is that relevant to our decision tonight? What's the protocol?
Whether it's relevant to your decision is up to you.
I don't see it as relevant.
It's off-site.
Right.
It's going to be a matter of fact, I think, right?
Yes.
It either is or isn't.
Right.
It's going to be up to, it sounds like, engineering department, they make that call? Okay, so that's, that's not really a decision driver for me.
Yeah, I agree. I think that could be addressed another time, maybe tomorrow.
All right. All right, commissioners, we have three items. And I think Mr. Pepperoni's suggestion was that for item three, which is going to be a recommendation to municipal council, that is for the ordinance text amendment, he suggested that we add a requirement to this text amendment that would require 10% of the building's square footage to be massed and situated as functional and usable open space. So Phil, just make a note of that as we discuss this item. And I'll look for a motion or further discussion on it. Item three.
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Rowan?
I move that. We forward a positive recommendation to the municipal council for Ridge Point Management Group's request for an ordinance text amendment to adopt a new zone, the Spring Creek High Occupancy Performance Redevelopment Option Zone 14.5036 for a proposed 62-unit townhome project located at 1606 South State Street in the Spring Creek Neighborhood. And would add to that motion a recommendation that we add language to the pro-zone about amassing that 10% of required open space into a single parcel, usable parcel, along the lines that's already present in, did you say, Bill, the medium and high-density zones?
Thank you, Mr. Rowan. Do we have a second for the motion?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Ms. Ellsworth. All those in favor of forwarding a positive recommendation to municipal council for item three as stated?
Aye.
Aye.
Any post? All right. We will forward a positive recommendation, and that was unanimous.
I'd like to make another recommendation, that we approve the Ridge Point Management's group, Ridge Point Management, Management Group's request for a concept plan approval for a 62-unit townhome development located at the same site as the previous zone. That's it.
And do we have a second for that motion?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Ms. Ellsworth. All those in favor of approving item four? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes, item four passes unanimously. And item five will be for a recommendation to municipal council. Do we have any further discussion or motion on item five?
I'd like to make a motion that we forward a positive recommendation to the municipal council for Ridge Point Management Group's request for a zone change from R110 to Spring Creek High Occupancy Performance Redevelopment Option Zone in the, in the same location as the previous two items.
I second that motion.
Seconded by Mr. Anderson. All those in favor of approve or forwarding a positive recommendation to council for item five?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we will forward a positive recommendation on item five to municipal council, and that was also unanimous. All right, we have two more items on the agenda for the evening. The next item, item six, Charlie Openshaw requests minor project plan approval for an addition on the south and southeast sides of the existing Days Market Shopping Center with a setback of approximately 15 feet from the property line, 10 feet behind the sidewalk, located at approximately 3127 North Canyon Road in the SC1 zone. This is in the Edgemont Neighborhood, and Mr. Maxfield will present item six.
Thank you. Just start with a little bit of orientation. You can see Canyon Road on the right and where this market is, if you're not familiar with it. The area we're talking about is the extreme south end of the, of the site. And the drawing on the right, or the photo on the right shows the three homes that would face out toward that direction and then kind of the street system and where the trees once were, where landscaping would be replaced. The illustrations show how they plan on dressing up the site. If you've been out there recently, they're redoing the facade of the, of the center. They would extend that facade out and around the corner on the site and then, and add some landscaping to the back of the property. You can see the current picture now, or at least how it looked before the facade renovation started. And the owner can talk about some of the landscaping and the changes that were from the trees that used to be there and what they plan on doing, if that's okay. This is just a picture of the street. The street was put in as a 50-foot wide road, which the city allowed it at one point. There was confusion when this first came in as to where the property line was on the north side of the street. We looked at it, several plats and several illustrations, which made us assume the property line was at the back of the curb in this, and the sidewalk was on the property. There's a distance of 25 feet behind the sidewalk to the building, so we had made an assumption that the 15-foot addition on the building would be the 10 feet from the sidewalk, but it would then be 15 feet from the property line and fit the base setback that's in an SC1 zone. The SC1 zone has that, but it also has, in our transitional residential standards, it has an additional 10 feet that's required, but it also throws in the caveat clause, the planning commission can vary that. You may recall that was done on the Jiffy Lube down on 3700 North and University Avenue, the setback from the wide right-of-way that the state had there, and we went down to a five-foot distance in that case. Of course, that had an additional width on the right-of-way, so, you know, maybe different circumstance. The landscaping they're looking at is trying to put that in, they'd have, again, that 10 feet behind the sidewalk to the building to put landscaping in to screen that wall somewhat. The wall would be of the, of the center is about 16 to 18 feet tall, I believe. So it's, it's not extraordinarily massive wall. It's, it's pretty common height for commercial centers. And then this is what the back wall looks like right now. I'm not sure some of those plantings were intentional or not, you know, if that was in the landscape plan. But this center and, and the vice chair of the neighborhood is here, she can probably give a specific area, I think was put in about 1980, '82 or '07, somewhere in there. But at the time, the street is actually part of the property. It is not a dedicated street. And so there's a lesser setback on this wall, you know, it was really trying to fit the center into a smaller site. And it's unusual because it's a grocery store-oriented center, yet it's in an SC2 zone where normally grocery stores go in an SC2, or I'm sorry, it's an SC1 zone, where normally grocery stores are in SC2. So there are a whole bunch of little compromises that went on when this was approved and, you know, worked out. I, the feedback I've gotten is real concern on the distance from some of the neighbors, as well as, you know, the landscaping that went down, is it going to be replaced? Is it going to be adequate? And then the vice chair of the neighborhood could also kind of address this, but she had concern about the noticing because of the holiday apparently got delayed by the post office. You know, we sent it out last week, but where a lot of people really didn't know and haven't been able to comment yet. And I'll let her comment to that. Let's see, this one, when we, we got some updated drawings that we went over, and these last drawings establish the property line on the north side of the sidewalk. I'm sorry, skipping around there, but getting back to that setback distance. So in reality, it becomes a 10-foot setback from the property line rather than a 15-foot. However, it's still 10 feet behind the sidewalk. So the placement's exactly the same. It's just a, it was a matter of establishing exactly where that property line is. And again, the planning commission has given discretion on that, that they can look at the site situation and address it. And that's what the applicant's asking for, to be able to expand the site. He can talk more about maybe the reasons and some of those issues.
So those same transitional regulations that I just referred to on the last item also apply here. This required setback is 15 feet in the transitional regulations, but it says specifically there that the planning commission can reduce that if you feel like there's sufficient barrier or buffer, you know, in that area. And that's what the developer will talk about. These non-conforming commercial centers are problematic in that they're non-conforming, but they're also very valuable because they allow for mixed use right into the fabric of the residential areas. And so, you know, we would hate to lose these centers that provide those commercial amenities. And yet their needs change over time, and their economics change over time, and that necessitates modifying buildings. And the developer will talk more about that. But we really enjoy having these mixed-use nodes throughout our city. They're very valuable.
Thank you. Ms. Ellsworth, did you have a question?
Yeah, I'm just looking at this, and it says 9.78 feet. Is that something we should be concerned about?
We round.
Okay, okay.
Any other questions for staff? All right. If not, I would like to invite the applicant, Mr. Openshaw, to present item six.
Thanks, Brian. I think you did a great job presenting that. In addition, I would just add that we have, we've tried to, you know, visually create some drawings where you can see, we tried to add a couple of layers of landscaping there to, you know, to soften that effect of coming closer to the street. We still think that, you know, 15 or 10 feet there beyond the sidewalk is plenty of room to, to do that. I will also say that, well, we're trying to get an ace, or we're trying to, this is to necessitate to necessitate an ACE hardware coming in the center. We've been working with them for almost two years, trying to get them in, and this is sort of where we're at. They have to have that space in order for it to work for them, in order to entice them to come. And if Days Market were here, they would, they would tell you that they're extremely supportive of ACE hardware coming in. There's a lot of synergy there for them, so they're very, very supportive of that. Otherwise, I'll just be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions for Mr. Openshaw? Ms. Ellsworth?
Can you bring back the Chilean restaurant?
I don't think you'd want me to attempt their cooking.
Any other questions? Am I correct in seeing that as a berm that screens the parking from the houses across the street?
There is a berm there, yes, right, yes.
I would say that's a good thing. It'll screen headlights and whatnot, yeah.
Yeah, I believe that's...
It's already there, right?
And you can see it a little bit more on the bottom part.
Yeah.
Is the pink barn stained?
Unfortunately, the pink barn, I think, has seen its last day.
What a shame. Any other questions? If not, thank you very much. I'd like to invite the Edgemont Neighborhood Chair to speak to item six. And please, please state your name for the record.
She's not here. And that speaks to part of this. If I hadn't happened to open my email from last week yesterday, I wouldn't have even known about this.
Could you please state your name for the record?
Sorry, my name's Sharon Memmon, I'm the vice chair.
Thank you.
My chair is unavailable till late this evening. I did speak with the neighbors, if you want to go back to the slide that shows the homes directly across. So on the far right, I heard that I needed to attend this meeting at 5:00 this evening and I spoke to the neighbor on the far right. At that time, she was, we're all disappointed those trees have gone away and that's been over a year ago. We were told they'd come back and we still haven't seen it and I'm guessing it's because we're still in process. So we're all sad about that. She was less sad than the rest of us because she doesn't view the building, she views Tempanogus now because the trees went away. So she'd be okay with just non-evergreen trees or something short. She was concerned that, and I'm sorry, I didn't have even time to discuss with her the actual plans because I didn't have them in front of me. She was concerned that there not be another opening on to 3060 North and the plans say that there is not, so her concern was met there. One question was where's the gym going because I think they're, I don't know why they care, none of them attended, but they were concerned. The neighbor on the far left here on the corner of 320 East and 3060 North was very concerned about the size of the building coming towards, directly towards her home. I'm concerned now that I'm hearing this is rounding up to 10 feet, Brian, Mr. Maxfield, that now we're not even at 10 feet. So this is getting closer and closer to the homes, which makes the landscaping even harder and harder to block that view. I'm looking at these drawings and I see that it looks like the, near her home, that the roof is getting taller, but I can't tell from this elevation if that's actually where Days is and it's the way it is now, or if the roof is going to get taller where ACE will be, kind of there off the left. But is this going to be part of the new addition or is that there and over Days Market and so not part of the question anyway? So I would also question, as I look at this, why the berm that is currently there has to go away because that would help with landscaping and visual effect? There's, so this berm that is here, that you see here, is currently the whole length of the block and I wonder why it wouldn't just stay and help with that. But I don't know anything about architecture and how you can't have dirt up to the building or something like that. So that's something you could work out for us. So that's my question. I don't know if the owners are aware we have had an ACE hardware there or true value. I don't know what the difference would be. And I don't know why they went away. I would guess it was because it failed because of location. I don't know. I don't know that any of the neighbors would have a problem with ACE coming. The two neighbors I spoke to said they didn't, but I don't know what value it would add. I don't know what noticing requirements are. As Mr. Maxfield noticed, those two neighbors that I spoke to today got their notice from the postman at 5:00 PM this evening. That's when our mail's delivered. So they were given an hour's notice on this item. That's why they aren't here. It sounds like they were okay with it, but I do have a neighbor that's farther down that street that said she was completely against it. Those were the three people I got to talk to before I came.
Can I jump in? The lady she's referring to, I believe, Mrs. Barrett?
Mrs. Barrett.
Yeah, she phoned us to express that.
But she was enough against it to contact you and I know Mrs. Barrett and she doesn't like to get involved in any of this. So the fact that she would contact you, to me, speaks very loudly, but I didn't get why she was against it. So, other than possibly this encroachment and the landscaping.
She mentioned her concern to the landscaping, you know, that it had gone and I'd sent her copies of this on that.
So she's, so I talked to her after that, then she was still not happy. So, so I am concerned hearing that it's rounding up, that this is getting smaller and smaller as we hear about it, so.
Yeah, it's 9.75, so it's, you know, that's where we typically always rounded, less than half a foot, kind of a thing, so.
Three inches, right?
So I don't know what...
And I apologize because I didn't see that number. I'd forgotten about it when we talked earlier, so. And it obviously showed up on the overheads.
So, and I don't know, I haven't even had the chance to speak to the applicant, if he'd be willing to cut that back a foot or two, just to be able to allow more landscaping and to bring that back. We love Days, we love the whole complex. It's been a great benefit, as Mr. Pepperoni mentioned, to the area. We don't want to see it go away, but we'd love our landscaping back.
Thank you. Are there any other neighborhood chairs or members of the public who would like to speak to item six? And please state your name for the record.
Hello, my name is Ben Leverage. I am a resident who lives on a parcel that is adjacent to one area of this plaza, not the area in question. So just a few quick comments and then a question which probably will need to be answered by Mr. Openshaw. The quick comments are, as a neighbor who walks this area, I'm definitely more in favor of bringing back the landscaping, even if that means that we, there's already a building there, there's already a wall there, so the difference between having the wall there currently with no landscaping versus having the wall still be there, but maybe a little bit closer with landscaping still seems like a net positive, especially if it brings in the opportunity for additional economic growth and economic value there in the shopping center. My mind likes the idea of an ACE hardware specifically a lot more than my pocketbook probably does, but I can certainly see some value there. The question that I have is that there was a proposal for a similar, well, a detached structure on the opposite, the north side of this parcel around a year ago and nothing has, nothing has proceeded to, I guess, to the state of inception there at that point, at this point. But in the meantime, there has been an additional loading bay and small storage area that's currently being worked on in the rear of this building and now we're talking about this additional addition on the south side of the plaza. And I'm just curious whether that is in addition to the proposed detached structure that was brought up last year, or if it's in replacement of, or what the relationship of this proposed improvement and the other improvements are relative to the others that have been brought up in the past and specifically the one that was discussed a year ago regarding a detached structure on the north parcel, north end of the parcel. That's all.
Thank you. All right. I do not see any other members of the public to speak to this item, so I will close it to public comment at this time and invite Mr. Openshaw to address any of the concerns he heard expressed.
Mr. Leverage, Leverage? Mr. Leverage's concern to address that, that is, that was intended, that separate structure was intended to facilitate, you know, ACE hardware moving in. The space still didn't work for them. So there are no plans to continue to do that right now. And the space he was talking about, this'll work, was in this very north part, it's on the other end of the shopping center, this northern lot there. But as of now, no, there's no, there's no plans to move forward with that. The height of the building is actually 15 feet, 15 feet, four inches to be exact of that new addition. What you're seeing back here, this is actually Days Hardware, or sorry, Days Market in the back. What other concerns were there?
So is that, what is it currently height-wise versus, you're saying it will be 15, what is it, right?
15'4". The height won't change.
Oh, the height won't, okay.
I believe this one shows the stepping where the height is. Is that what you're saying? So that's what gets kind of bunched into the illustration?
And these trees will, oh, sorry, yeah, those trees will probably be removed and made to be nicer.
They look like volunteers.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Mr. Openshaw?
Indigenous trees, I'm sorry.
I was just asking the commissioners if they had any more questions for you.
Maybe I missed something in what Mr. Leverage said about landscaping. Were you talking about landscaping in the back or on the side there?
On the side, they're proposing the...
Yeah. Do you feel like he's addressed that concern or question, or?
Yes, my, just my statement was that currently it lacks any landscaping aside from grass and the role of the building will move closer to the street and will, there will be trees and shrubbery.
Right, okay.
And I think that's an improvement over the first.
Got it, I see.
And that drawing could be a little bit better there in that there will still be the berm there. That drawing sort of, sort of shows it as not being there, but it'll still be there.
In between the concrete?
In between the sidewalk and the building, yeah. In between, Mike.
But will there be the berm there inside the concrete, what looks like is concrete?
Tree well kinds of things, miner boxes, something like that? Right.
Those were planters to allow for more vegetation. That was one of the concessions we were making was adding more landscape to that side other than pine trees and grass.
Right.
So by adding those plants, you could get more vegetation than what you throw.
So what I'm, I guess what I'm asking just for clarification is that you've got those planters, no berm, in between the planter, berm. And fire red plants, fire, the burning bushes.
It was Christmas, it was Christmas.
It's just conceptual, right?
Oh, they match your coat, actually, kind of.
All right, commissioners, any other questions for the applicant?
Thanks.
All right, thank you. All right, I'll turn it back over to the commissioners for discussion, a motion, and we will be approving or disproving or continuing item six.
I mean, I have no problem approving, I just, I have no idea about the one-hour notice thing and that seems like the most valid concern. I understand that you sent it out on your clock, that seemed to be the right way, but do staff feel concerned that neighbors got the notice tonight at 5:00 PM?
Well, it always does. You know, it's a courtesy notice, it's not a requirement, you know, state code or city or anything else, but we're always concerned that really looks bad, you know, to cities when somebody really doesn't, we invite their comment, but we never really tell them about the meeting, you know, kind of a thing.
I guess with the holiday last week and then Christmas is on us. Yeah.
I mean, I would say that it's hard for me to imagine comments that would dissuade me from approving the plan, so I mean, I don't know. It's just, in my mind, it looks great. It seems like a real, a really nice upgrade all around, you know, maybe there's something I'm not seeing that would affect the kind of larger community rather than, you know, an individual neighbor not liking the aesthetics of something. But, you know, so that's where I'm at. I mean, I don't know that comments would necessarily radically alter how I feel about the project, but yeah, it does not look great.
I would agree with Mr. Pepperoni's earlier statement that these kinds of neighborhood shopping centers are too far and few between and the few that we have, we should nurture them. And this is definitely an improvement to update the facades, to add another tenant, substantial tenant, and a tenant that I would definitely patronize. Instead of going to the big box stores, it's nice to have a neighborhood hardware store for sure. So I would be in favor of this moving forward.
And rather than move forward, this is something we approve, right? This is...
Yes, we have, we will approve or disprove this.
I think it looks 20 times better than what's there now and I'm ready for a motion.
I move that we approve item number six, the reduction in the landscape requirement by five feet, allowing the applicant to maintain a minimum of 15 feet of landscaping based on the finding that the proposed alternative buffering arrangement is equal to or better than the requirements that are set forth in Section 1434302 of the municipal code.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Ms. Ellsworth?
I have a clarification.
Please.
We had in there that the distance between the sidewalk to the new building would be 10 feet and I believe Mr. Anderson said 15 for landscaping. We had 15 from the property line, but it's really 10 feet of landscaping. Did you mean that to be 15 feet or?
Let me amend my motion then to reflect a reduction in landscaping still of five feet or is it of 10? You're going from 20 down to 10 or from 15 to 10?
From 25 to 10.
From 25 to 10? Okay. So a reduction in the landscaping requirement from...
No, that's not right. No, it's 15 feet down to 10. Sorry, the required.
Okay. I guess I'm reading the wrong placement. How about if we just start over and say, I move that we approve item number six with a minimum of 10 feet of landscaping, as has been described earlier tonight, based on the finding that that buffering arrangement is equal to or better than what would otherwise be required?
I'll second that motion.
Seconded by Ms. Ellsworth. All those in favor of approving item six as motioned?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, item six is approved. Right, and our last item on the agenda this evening is for recommendation to Municipal Council, item seven. The Provo City Community Development Department requests an amendment to the general plan regarding the adoption of the moderate income housing element of the general plan and the 2018 Moderate Income Housing Report for Provo City. This has citywide impact and Mr. Maxfield will present.
Thank you. And clarification on this, we wrote this description prior to a few other things. The housing element is not actually due until July 1st of 2019. So in a way, we talked about this in the staff report, it's kind of initiating that process. The moderate income housing report, however, is due December 31st and so we are trying to act on that right now. And hopefully you all got a copy of that, an email. And hopefully you all got a copy of that, an email. I do have hard copies if you need that. But it truly is a report that just talks about, you know, what's been done in the last couple of years to meet the goals and policies of our existing moderate-income housing plan. The differences are shown on the screen. They're required every two years, measures progress and goals for the report. The plan is a little bit more in-depth. In fact, the state upped the requirements for that in the last session. So, you know, we feel there's a need to go in and update that. When you talk about the housing, you get into these little mix there. It's affordable and available, you know, is the key to that. And so if you can get that, you're in good shape. Otherwise, you can't really meet the situation. You're meeting it partway. So you've either got to address affordability or address availability. The housing gap is shown here. These are reports that are done on a state basis. And just try and do this real quickly, but this is for renters. And as you're aware, Provo has more renters than we have single-family residents. The renter households are there in green. The affordable units are shown in yellow. And then the affordable and available are shown in red. And you can see, as you kind of go down there, the real lacking area, and this is, the one on the left is Provo, the one on the right is the state. In both cases, it's at under thirty percent. The extremely low income, that is the main need we have. The other one that we identified in the report is larger units, meaning more bedrooms. We are getting a lot of, one, studios, ones and twos. We do get some three bedrooms in. But for, you know, a lot of these families, you know, they need more because of the size of the families. And so, you know, that's basically the main need or emphasis we still need to work on. Now, as that turns into the element, and I think this is where we're getting to our general plan update, it's attempt to identify those in more concise verbiage that our goal is to do this and then create a responsibility and a way to measure that accomplishment, much more than we have in our standards now. And the state suggestion, maybe we have five main ones would always be better than twenty or something like that, but something we could really focus on. So that would be part of that element as we develop that. I put this on just to illustrate one thing on our numbers, and we have this on kind of the summary. But there's a real feeling that our numbers are skewed. Utah is measured very differently by the Census Bureau and estimates than the rest of the country. They started doing that several decades ago because our population per household diverse and everything else is totally different. Not totally, but it's different than the rest of the country. So as you say, Utah is different to the United States. You can say Provo is different to Utah. Our numbers in that area, six oh two, sixteen hundred, or sixteen tract and the eighteen tract, that's twenty-two thousand people, you know, or, I'm sorry, twenty-two percent of the city even. It's somewhere around twenty-two thousand, but it represents a large portion of our numbers. If you look, we have a lot of, gee, blanking out here, non-household housing. That's basically the dorms, eight thousand units. It makes it look like we've got this gap of people that aren't in homes. I can also tell you the income for these areas are the lowest in the city. And so when you start throwing those numbers into an overall city number, it really skews the information. We presented that a little bit to the city's housing committee. And something that I think in this element, we really need to see if we can pull out and identify and really make kind of a stand on that. It's interesting, about forty years ago, Provo fought to get the students counted differently because they wanted the numbers. Well, the downside of that, they get counted and skew all of the other numbers for income and. And what that evolves into is the real concern is that we're not going hard after what's really, what the problem is. You kind of get sidetracked because you're trying to address things that may not be, need to be addressed instead of addressing the main items. But this basically states the findings that we've reached. Income's not keeping pace with housing costs. These are the same findings you're going to find all over the state, probably. Largest need for extremely low income, need for larger units. Student population may be destroying the city's identified needs and need really to do better projections than we've had. And then that's just the needs for many, the housing element. This is kind of the proposed schedule, was including your packets that we'd look at to try and get this done. We're going to try and coordinate much more closely than we've done in the past with our own redevelopment agency who writes, who does our federal funding and writes, with, in cooperation with, you know, on a regional basis, barriers to affordable housing reports and even housing plans that are more regional in nature. The state would like cities to address things more regionally. And so that's another thing we're going to attempt to do. But anyway, here's kind of the general schedule. So what we'd really want you to do tonight is if you would recommend approval on the report. But then, I guess, basically, you know, direct us to start the other process and more or less follow this time schedule on the plan.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Maxfield? Mr. Anderson?
Love the idea of moving forward to update the moderate-income housing plan, but I don't see anything that suggests that a city needs to adopt the biennial report. So, I mean, I'd.
And it's, yeah, exactly. There's not, it used to be issues of whether that was a true element of the plan or not in the report.
I think it's clearly, it's distinct from a plan that has to be reviewed every five years or updated every five years, reviewed every two. But the numbers are what they are. I think it's, the numbers come from the State Department of Workforce Services. They go in the report, and that's it. So it's really this process, the development of the plan, that is the deliberative part. So if staff wants a motion to recommend approval of this, I'm totally game for that, but.
Ms. Ellsworth?
Are you suggesting we don't need to adopt the report and we don't adopt the report?
It's not a state requirement.
Right. So we just, we what? We make a recommendation to staff that we proceed forward with this schedule using the report to update the plan? Is that a?
That complies with state law.
Are you good with that, Brian?
Or we don't need to do that, I guess, but.
Who requires the housing report? Who is that required by?
The state. It's, it's the Community Development Division or whatever it's called. It's under the auspices of Workforce Services.
Housing and Community Development.
Housing and Community Development. And they have developed more of a formula as they've gone along. It used to be you could do this or another method. They've really pinned it down into this is the way we want it. And really, these reports all look pretty much the same. Well, except for the numbers, but I mean the formats.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I know those guys. That's all right.
There are no members of the public or neighborhood chairs here, so there's no public comment on this at the moment. Mr. Rowan?
No, I'm not prepared to make a comment.
Do we make a motion to staff to recommend that they move forward with? I can do that.
Do it.
Well, I think there's two parts to this, item seven. It's a recommendation to municipal council. And that the housing, moderate-income housing element of the general plan.
Where?
Continue.
So is this report part of our ordinance?
The report has, it's not an ordinance, it's.
Because it says recommend denial of the proposed ordinance amendment. Am I looking at the wrong thing?
Sorry, that's where they're playing, I didn't change it.
Oh, okay. This would be a change from staff recommendation, okay. Approve and adopt the report, and then the planning commission adopt the general timeline for the review. Yeah, I'm not exactly sure how to proceed, but I, I suggest.
I want to proceed so badly.
I know.
Read the staff recommendation, that kind of tells you.
Yeah, I would recommend that you accept the report and move it forward to the municipal council and that you further encourage staff to proceed with the submitted timetable for the moderate-income housing plan.
Okay.
Somebody say so moved.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, who's going to make the motion?
Brian did.
Are you serious? That's adequate?
I took it. Shannon made the motion.
Yeah, I made the motion. I can, I can do it formally, right?
She made the motion, some moves suggested, everything Brian just said.
Do you want me to say it?
No, that's fine. If you're happy, I'm happy. We have a second?
Yeah.
All those in favor of the motion as stated?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
I propose that we adjourn.
Seconded.
We adjourned.
So moved.